Okay, good evening, everybody. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas available on the table near the entrance or online at the city's website. Consent agenda items are routine items which are voted on in one motion or vote. Unfinished or new business items are voted on separately. Councils will be given the opportunity for questions or comments followed by citizens. We'll have the opportunity to speak, must speak at the podium and identify themselves. Citizens will be allowed to speak one time per agenda item for up to three minutes. Citizens who wish to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to do so during the public comment section of the agenda for up to three minutes. And let us kick off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First up, disclosure of conflict of interest. Any of the speakers have any conflicts of interest on any of the votes that they will take tonight? Seeing none, we are going to move on to the first item, which is proclamation for Martial Arts Day. And we have a couple of guests here this evening. You guys want to come up real quick? All right, what I'm going to have you guys do is just introduce yourself and kind of talk about what events you guys are preparing for this weekend.
I am Sensei Isabella Cicero, here with Hewards Martial Arts. And we have a big tournament this weekend, locally actually, right at Champions.
I'm Evan Haviland.
What are you participating in? What's your competitions this weekend?
I'll be at Champions and I'll be doing like forms and fighting and chumbra.
Excellent, awesome, all right, great. All right. So whereas martial arts serves as a dynamic foundation for emotional growth and lifelong success skills, and whereas engaging in martial arts not only builds strength, character, and focus, but also enhances flexibility and coordination, boosting performance in sports, the workplace, at home and in school; and whereas martial arts empowers individuals of all ages with essential skills in goal-setting, anger-management, and nonviolent conflict resolution, fostering a healthier and more productive lives; mark your calendars for the 43rd Battle of Maine Martial Arts Championship on March 22nd, an event that promises excitement and camaraderie while supporting a great cause, the Maine Children's Cancer Program. Join them for a day of action and inspiration. Now therefore, I, Michael Morris, as mayor, on behalf of the city council and residents of Waterville, do hereby proclaim March 22nd, 2025, as Martial Arts Day. All set? All right. One, two, three, perfect, awesome. Thank you, thank you very much. Good luck, guys. All right, moving right on now to a presentation for artwork installed at Levine's Park, provided by, presented by Waterville Creates. If you guys come up to the podium here, that'd be great.
Good evening and thank you for having us. I'm Marie Sugden, Exhibitions Coordinator at Waterville Creates. We are excited to share with you a proposal from Maine artist Chris Miller to install four semi-permanent artworks at Levine's Park. Last fall, we surveyed nearly 500 community members, and the results showed a strong support for more public art in Waterville. The city previously identified Levine's Park as a priority site for public art, making it the ideal location for this project, especially as a gateway to downtown. Our past public art initiatives include Jesse Salisbury's River Art at Head of Falls and Light Sentinels in Costangway Square, both in which we have collaborated with the city. For this project, we were drawn to Chris's ability to blend natural history with creative, creativity, and wonder, as seen in his work with Tempo Art in Portland. He also contributed to the early design phases of the Children's Discovery Museum, and we're excited to welcome him back to Waterville. With that, I'll turn it over to Chris to introduce himself, provide an overview of the project, and answer any questions.
Awesome, thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. I have a few slides, I'm going to go through them quickly.
Sure.
Try to keep it to a five-minute presentation and maybe leave time for questions if there are any. And actually, I think that's the end of my presentation, if you could flip back to the first slide. In fact, I have two slide decks. There's the one I'm going to talk about, and then there's the second half that we can look at if we need to.
Okay.
Yeah, so, just to introduce myself a little more, Marie hit all the high notes. I have a joint background in architecture and sculpture, which is fairly common among people who do public art projects. So my public art practice sort of took off, maybe coincidentally, when I became a parent. And what's really important to me in this practice is to promote imagination, creativity, and especially a sense of wonder. Understanding as I do, you know, more and more every year, that these are nice in their own right, but also, I think, civic virtues in their own way. So, next slide, please. I just want to share with you one sort of uncanny influence. You read things and then you come across them years later. This is a book called, a passage from a book, called "The Amazing Story of Maine." It was written in 1935 by someone who I understand briefly attended Colby College. It's actually a history of the earth with a focus on Maine. And so he explains, and it's my understanding, that Maine, in general, doesn't have very much of a fossil record as far as dinosaurs, and large charismatic prehistoric animals are concerned. We can guess what was here by what we find in the Bay of Fundy, which used to be a valley, and the Connecticut River Valley. If you go to the next slide, please. But the line that really struck me when I remembered it in this book is that the author invites us to imagine the prehistoric banks of the Kennebec. After explaining we can't really know for sure what was here, and what we can guess, we have to guess from old fragments of old bones. But he doesn't say, he doesn't apologize for this, he says, "It's free for us to imagine certain of these animals." And so that's sort of such an optimistic thing to say. It's such a, it's the sentiment of a person who really loves learning, is excited about the pursuit of knowledge. And that's where I pick up. If you go to the next slide, please. So I suppose you could summarize the why of these four prehistoric animals in three sentences. I'll just read the three at the bottom of these three slides. Pardon my voice. "These wild maybes are visitors from an ancient earth, as remote and unknowable as the far future." Next slide, please. "That is why they are stationed here as honorary crossing guards, where the deep past and the far future meet." Next slide. "You can roam here too, if you like, among the wild maybes, in the vastness and richness of time beyond reckoning." So if you go to the next slide, you'll probably all recognize Levine's Park. I think it's Waterville's newest park. It's a long, narrow strip of land at the intersection of, if I count them right, six streets. It's Main Street, Front Street, Bridge Street, Water Street, and Spring Street. So it's very busy, there's a lot of Connecticut, it's a kinetic place, there's a lot of activity. Traffic isn't terribly fast, but it's also a stone's throw from the river. You've so many things to look at. You have the bridge there, and to the north you have downtown, to the south you have the Lockwood Mills. And it's a, it's a busy crossroads. It's also something of an in-between place. So I apologize for some of these images being very small. We have handouts for later, if you'd like to look as well, and I'll look at close-ups as well. But these four animals are essentially at the cardinal points of the park, the larger two being at the north and south, and the smaller at the east and west. They're all at least six feet inboard of the sidewalk, except for at the north end of the park, near where there's a bench and a sign about the Levine store, one's a little closer to the sidewalk. You can go to the next slide, please. So these sculptures are based on real prehistoric animals, such as we understand them, which is imperfectly. And so the signage for these would essentially be the three-sentence narrative that I read to you just now, with a link to more information for those who are interested in it. And this is how I like my projects to work. There has to be something for everyone. So for a six-year-old who just wants to run up and hug a leg, that's absolutely great. And if there are curious grownups like me, some more information about the animals and the project will be accessible. Also, in terms of signage, there are many public artworks around the country that invite certain types of public interaction, like sitting or swinging, but discourage others. So we would use signage in that way as well. So, you know, the sign might read, "Please do not climb on Veralanda," which is the name of that sculpture, and in the background, "Have a seat, but please do not climb on Carifodon." Go to the next slide, please. So I won't read these out to you, but you're welcome to read them later. Veralanda, like all these creatures, emerged over 50 million years ago, which is remarkable because the dinosaurs disappeared suddenly. They went extinct en masse about 65 million years ago. So if you picture our current era, the end of the dinosaurs here, and where we are here and now here, we inhabit this space of time, and these animals inhabit this space of time. They don't resemble much of what is alive now on Earth. But I'm concerned with their architecture and their presence in the park, and the way they occupy the space. So Veralanda here is posed, he's searching, he's looking south. And if you go to the next slide, please. This is Eoconodon. Eoconodon is called by some paleontologists "a wolf on hooves" because he's such a remote ancestor of mammals, that his descendants are thought to be both undulates, animals with hooves, and the predators that hunt them, if you can imagine. He may also be an ancestor of whales before whales chose to migrate back into the ocean. Next slide, please. This is Carifodon. There was a nice old portrait of Carifodon on one of the first slides. Very much a mystery, one of the first common animals, one of the first common land mammals to be much larger than a squirrel. We think it was a non-placental mammal, and its teeth are referred to as tusks or fangs or saber teeth, depending on the commentator. Next slide, please. This is my favorite, Unithyrium. Now, there's nothing about Unithyrium's anatomy that suggests he would sit upright this way. He probably stood more like a rhinoceros. But my agenda with this installation is not primarily to present an accurate portrait of prehistory, but to present sort of a friendship delegation, if you will, from the deep prehistory of Maine to the present moment and the future beyond. So if you advance to the next slide, please. So I'll tell you just briefly about where these forms come from, how they'll be made. All of the models that you've seen are hand-modelled maquettes, about this size. And the reason they're done that way is to keep the forms simple and to give them a sort of intimacy that things made by hand have. If you go to the next slide, please. And then zooming into the 21st century, those sort of hand-sized models are 3D-scanned and brought into design software for materials estimates, some engineering, and scaling. If you, next slide, please. So you can see in the middle row to the left, the way that these will be built, they'll be built on structural concrete slabs, precast slabs made a little bit like a transformer pad, if that means anything to anyone. And then they'll be built integrally on top and lifted into place on a prepared site. I think the city, the Public Works, has agreed to do some, what amounts to very minimal site preparation, mostly gravity will hold these in place. Next slide, please. And so there's a cross-section of what they'll look like on the site. It's not a lot of digging, not very much disruption. And you can't see, but towards the bottom of the slab, there are little slots, which if you advance to the next slide, you can see, this is actually, Jesse Salisbury was mentioned, Marie mentioned that he has a sculpture on the River Walk. He also has a rigging company and a lot of expertise in moving public art. So he would help me install this project with his heavy trailer and his boom crane, and we would essentially just pick each sculpture up from the bottom. We could drive right into Levine's Park and set them down one at a time, and then cover over the bases with a little gravel, so they're easy to mow around. Next slide, please. So the schedule, it's a little bit of a moving target, because the project, of course, isn't approved yet, you'll vote on it next session, is my understanding. There is some hope that it could be done before the Film Festival, which I believe begins on July 11th. And if it's not, I anticipate it could be done by August. One more slide, please. The maintenance plan for this, I mean, everybody likes a simple maintenance plan. A silicone sealer could be applied to these once every two years, at least. Graffiti can be removed using common products, ProsoCo is one, and then the sealer would be reapplied. But what I like most about these materials is that they're actually repair materials. They're commonly used to repair lower-quality concrete, so they can be used in the unanticipated need or event to repair themselves. So yeah, if you advance to the last slide. Thank you, and thank you for listening to my spiel. Apologies for my voice again, and does anyone have any questions? Is this an appropriate time to ask for questions?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Great, thank you.
No, I mean, listen, I think this is, this is great, you know, it's very interesting. I didn't understand the project when I saw it the first time on the agenda, but now I see it and I think it's kind of cool. I kind of equated more in a thing like, almost to like the trolls in at the Botanical Gardens, you know? And, you know, sort of to kind of walk around and kind of learn about each one of those. I see a similar thing in just a smaller footprint here, so that's really cool. So I'll open it up to the council with any other questions or comments or anything like that. Council Green.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree, it's a really fascinating project. I love the idea of imagining what was once here. I just wondered, at the beginning, someone said it was a semi-permanent exhibit, so I just wondered about, if you could say more about that.
Yeah, it's interesting, everyone just defines different sort of benchmarks for what's temporary, permanent. Semi-permanent in this case, I believe, what we talked about is 10 years, which then we could reexamine. There's actually a very long tradition of concrete prehistoric animals, going all the way back to 1850, the Crystal Palace dinosaurs, which, to be honest, they've been refurbished, but very recently. And concrete, I should say, people think of concrete and they see a cracked sidewalk, but there's a enormous range of things that material can be. So this is a certain product that's highly engineered with glass fiber reinforcement and high-quality ingredients. It's actually what's used to make animal enclosures at Seuss. There's a certain irony in that, but I chose it because it's very impact-resistant, it's resistant to freeze-daw cycles, it should be perfectly durable, and if there are any mishaps, it's easily repaired.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Council, keep going.
And you, these are cast in a mold of some sort?
No, great question. They're actually built on an armature. The 3D-scanning process, you know, basically sheet by sheet, we would trace out a foam armature, a lot like 3D-printing, stack it up, build the reinforcement steel mesh onto that, and then apply, you actually spray it on like stucco, if anyone's ever seen that.
Oh, so the core of them is foam?
Yeah, that's right. It's a, the material is heavy, but the outer thickness of concrete is about two inches thick, not to get too far into the mundane. But that's the detail that the manufacturer recommended for gorilla and elephant enclosures. Often, it's much thinner, but you know, to be on the safe side. The nice thing about working this way is I was able to sort of design the weights, so they were very bottom-heavy and stable. And everything fits on one trailer load. Jesse Fieldstone LLC's equipment will handle this in one delivery run, basically.
And so I guess in the hopefully improbable occurrence of a vehicular mishap, right? I mean, they're six feet off of the road at an intersection of six, it's kind of a crazy intersection there. If one of these structures was to be hit, they would not be hitting a giant boulder of concrete, they would be hitting something that had, despite the two inches or whatever you say of the shell, it would be something with a foam, maybe having a little more give? I don't know, I'm just thinking about that.
I'm afraid I can't speak authoritatively to what would happen in that instance, but it wouldn't be a solid concrete boulder, much, much lighter than if it were solid. So I would, you know, if I had to guess, hazard a guess, it would be, the car would win.
Okay. Well, hopefully the passenger would win, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, these are, these are things you have to think about. It's well-lit, that area at night. We're not proposing any additional lighting because the ambient light is pretty, pretty good.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this point? Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Yeah. What's next for this particular item is it'll appear as an agenda item next, on the April 1st meeting, just a memo of understanding, kind of talking about, you know, the maintenance plan, responsibilities, timelines, and things of that nature. So you'll, you'll see that in your packets for the next meeting, so. Okay, moving on to City Managers' Report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Starting off, we are planning a housing symposium. We're calling "Building Waterville's Future: A Discussion of Housing Challenges and Opportunities." This is slated for June 12th at the Chase Forum, 8:30 to 6:00 p.m. Sessions will include discussions on the current state of housing in Waterville, trends, key challenges, as well as potential opportunities, including affordable housing models, homeownership opportunities, and development of upper-floor residential. We'll have a list of guest speakers forthcoming, so please save the date on your calendars. Again, that's June 12th, 8:30 to 6:00, at the Chase Forum. Next item, I normally, as you know, like to report good news and progress for the city, but unfortunately, this is one that doesn't fit into that category. As you may have seen, with the federal budget process, we have lost our $1.6 million for downtown vision projects, that earmark, really unfortunate, a lot of hours already went into planning these projects, you know, Andy is here, who already spent quite a bit of time on this. So unfortunately, pending other immediate sources of funding, these are largely going to be shelved for this year. I want to say, you know, do not give up hope. I know Michael Hollen and I have had discussions, he is looking for other potential grant opportunities, and we will be exhausting any other potential sources of money to try to get at least something off the ground this year. But this is a big blow to us, it was $1.6 million. A lot of staff time went into just shepherding this through the process and getting a successful award here, so really unfortunate, but all of Maine's CDS and CPF project funding was pulled, so it's not just us, we're all in the same boat on this. But really unfortunate, but we hope to find some other ways around, but it is what it is for the time being. So I think what we were talking about, what we were planning for '25, needs to be tempered quite a bit at this point, unfortunately. Next, Joe's been in our office and been working on a welcome guide for new residents of Waterville to become better acquainted with the community and with resources, so I'm going to invite Joe up just for a minute or two to talk about some of his work here.
Wonderful, thanks, Brian, and good evening, everyone. After a good presentation about the Senazooic, maybe it's time that we focus on the future, specifically the future for new residents in Waterville. And who better to do that? Well, than the new guy. Until that moniker's lifted, I will continue to call myself that. In any case, what I have here is a 10-page Welcome to Waterville Guide. This is meant for new residents, it provides an overview of local resources and opportunities, including a general welcome from our elected officials, focus on city services, recreation, education, ways to get involved in the community, and then also how to identify and engage with local businesses. This report, I'd like to give a shout-out to the city of Auburn, they have an excellent guide that helped to service the basis for this, so well done, they also used Canva too, so we're on the same side with that. But jokes aside, it was, you know, a very fun project to work on. For the time being, we've kept it relatively short and digestible, as you might imagine. Fortunately, we live in a city with a lot of great resources, so over time, we can expand this. this or adjust it as need be. If anyone wants to get a copy of this, fret not, worry not. By 10:00 a.m. tomorrow, it will be up on the city website, and we're identifying ways to get this out to realtors or to other individuals who have direct contact with new residents so they can sort of figure out what's available and how to get involved and engage with our wonderful community. So I'm happy to take any questions, suggestions, or thoughts people have, or alternatively, this will be up at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow.
Any questions at this time from the council? Wonderful. Thank you, Joe. I appreciate it.
All right, Joe, thank you. Our Historical Marker Signs Committee continues to meet. We had a meeting last week, and we are looking at sites around the city. And this is to tell not just the story of Waterville's history, but some of the story of our people and obviously our natural resources that have contributed to the city's birth and rise and development. And so we'll be looking at those. We have sort of a poll going around right now, or will be, with the group to identify those locations. I also just want to thank our city staff, Michael and Joe, but also we have some very enthusiastic Colby students involved in this project who are contributing quite a bit. So thank you to them. And also appreciate and look forward to our continued partnership with the Bill and Joan Alafon Foundation here, who are major partners with this project. My next City Managers' Open Office Hours event will be on April 7, 3:30 to 5:30, right here at the City Hall Annex. Of course, all Waterville residents and business owners are welcome and encouraged to attend to share their thoughts, views, concerns, complaints, or anything else you'd like to share with me. So again, that's right here, April 7, 3:30 to 5:30 p.m. Lastly, I do just want to say, you know, I think we can all agree, Waterville had a little bit of a tough week this past week. We had the, obviously, the announcement of the closing of Inland Hospital, which is a major blow to our community, 300 jobs, obviously the access to health care that it provided. But then we also had the loss of the $1.6 million for our downtown vision projects this week. And we also had the resignation of a councillor today. So it's been a bit of a tough week for Waterville, but I do just want to say, you know, we should not be discouraged. The fundamentals of this city remain very strong. The progress that we've made and continue to make is still extremely promising. And so while we've had some setbacks this week, and I can't say they're minor setbacks, they're definitely setbacks, I'm very confident that city staff, our community partners, and others will work their hardest to find ways around these challenges and continue to do great things for this city. I know we will on the city side in addressing the Downtown Vision Plan. That is a document that we are absolutely motivated. I know city staff following me will pick this up and continue it to bring to full fruition. We will. This is a bump in the road, but there are potential other areas of funding we can potentially apply again for CDS funding in the future. So it is not dead. It's a bump in the road. But I just wanted to say that. I think we've had a little bit of a tough week. We've been beaten up a little bit. But again, the fundamentals of this city are very strong and continue to be very strong, and we should be optimistic about our future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right. Next, we come up with council comments. And this evening, I think I would just like to kick us off here with a few comments of my own. Like Brian mentioned just a few moments ago, you know, earlier today, we did have the resignation of a councillor. Councillor Finch has resigned his position in Ward 6. Want to take this opportunity to certainly thank him for his service and wish him nothing but the best in the future. With that, we do have a new face here at the table. I would like to welcome Spencer Kriegbaum. He is the Ward 5 City Council, who won his special election on March 11th. So Councillor Kriegbaum joins us here tonight. We did swear him in on Wednesday, and he was able to participate in our council retreat, which we had on Saturday, which was, I thought, a really great event. We've done this, what, five or six years now in a row? We had this facilitator come in, and we talked, you know, a lot about our goals for the upcoming year and, you know, some other things. So it was a really good opportunity for us to kind of connect as a group and really chart the course for the upcoming year. So with that, welcome. And if you want to say something, please feel free. If not, that's okay, too.
Yeah, thank you. I thought the meeting that we had on Saturday, the kind of, the training, the kind of overview of what we were looking to do for this year sets a really good pace for all of us. It got us all on the same side, moving in the same direction. And I'm happy to be here and participate in that and do what's best for Waterville.
Thank you. All right. With that, any other councillors with any council updates or committee reports at this time? All right. Seeing none, can I, we'll move into public comments. Anyone from the public here wishing to make a comment on anything that's not on the agenda tonight? And given the length of the agenda, I'm not sure what that would be, but you're more than welcome at this point to do that. Seeing none, we will move into consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Before I proceed, I don't know if the youth council members have any updates also?
I apologize. I wrote that, too, youth council. I am so sorry. Please, can you provide us with an update? Do you have an update?
Is it on now?
Yes.
Oh, it is? Okay, good. Well, we haven't been working on a whole lot, but we have made great strides with our Instagram subcommittees discussing on how to proceed with our social media representation, because that's a great way to connect with like our, you know, other youth in the community. Also, we are furthering our, you know, attempts to like get this job fair going with the, you know, AYCC. And so that's going extremely well. We've made some great connections with the director. And that's about it, if you have anything else to add.
Okay, nevermind.
I think that's all.
What was the tentative date of the job fair that you've been working on?
Question.
I'm sorry. Yeah, if I spoke at a...
What?
We're not exactly sure. I think something like June is what we're thinking, but I can't speak.
No, it's, I'm sorry. It is on the 3rd of May at the AYCC, and it's from 10 to 1.
Okay. 3rd of May, huh?
Yes. It's a Saturday.
10 to 1.
Yes.
Is this for youth jobs, or is it specifically for youth jobs? Yeah, that's great.
And then we're bringing the component also of volunteerism. So not only, if you're not looking for a job, you know, if you want to look for an opportunity to volunteer and become a little more specifically-minded, then there'll be some, you know, we're looking to get some folks there that are looking for volunteers. So, youth volunteers.
How, if, how do people get involved? So say, there is some business or some potential employer that would like to go to this event, and they're looking for eager, precocious youths to employ. How would a potential employer get, who would they contact? Who in your group, or who should be contacted?
Well, so first of all, we will be going to like many, if not most, of like the, you know, youth hiring jobs in the community, first of all. But if they want to come to us, we will be like giving out a flyer and a few other things in the near future, so.
Heidi Sumner at the AYCC would be a great contact. She's assisting, or she's, you know, really running the show with all of the businesses that'll be participating and so on and so forth. They can certainly contact myself as, too, and we can get them in the right spot. So, Councillor, a bit of...
Is it on? Is it on?
Should be.
Yeah.
Okay. I just didn't get their name for the introduction.
You go first.
My name is Tracy Aretti. I'm a freshman at Waterville Senior High School.
I'm Joshua Schmazel. I'm a sophomore at Waterville Senior High School.
Thank you. Any other further questions? Awesome. Thank you, guys. I apologize. Okay, now, consent agenda. Can I get a motion to the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. And all those in favor? Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have a discussion item, and this is going to be a discussion for the need for an acting city manager and other potential options. You know, we kind of earmarked this out as something that might be a possibility for us or a need. So we thought it would be now a good time with us having been, I think this will be three weeks since the applications are open, for us to kind of discuss that. I know that Don, the gentleman who is running our process, did make a recommendation, so I thought it would be good to bring him here tonight to talk about what he does. And certainly, at this point, we can, again, just a simple discussion. We can choose what we want to do at a future date. But at this point, I'd like to introduce Cornell Knight, and he's going to just kind of talk about the uniqueness of what he does. So, Cornell, thank you.
Cornell Knight. I do interim management work. A little background, I have a 40-year career in municipal management, shortly after graduating from UMaine with a degree in public management, which they don't offer anymore, which is part of the problem with hiring new managers around Maine. I started in the town of Baileyville and went to Hollowell, Jay, Winthrop, Topsom, and then ended my career in Bar Harbor. I retired in 2022 after a little over seven years there. And then I started to do some consulting work with Don, actually participated in the search here when we hired Brian. And I've done, I think it's five interim stints, Hancock County, Farmington, back to Bar Harbor for three months, Orno, and just did a brief stint in Pittsfield. So really, the interim's job is just to keep things moving along so that there isn't a backlog of items when the new manager is hired. So it's really just keep things moving, and that's what I do.
Excellent. All right. Any questions for Cornell, or any discussion at this point?
I guess, I, thank you for providing a sample contract. I was just wondering about the actual timeframe of it. Obviously, a lot is uncertain, so would, I presume this would be flexible based on when our new city manager could begin? How does that work for you when you enter into something like this?
Well, the timing is about right. I was told it was May 1st, because I'll be away most of April. And it can be as, I was only in Pittsfield a month. I was in Orno seven months. That was longer than I anticipated. But they used a recruitment consultant from Texas, and it was just a very slow process. I mean, she didn't come to Orno for, it was almost two months after I had started. So, and they do a brochure and kind of involved process. So that one just took a little longer. I was three months in Hancock County, six months in Farmington, three months in Bar Harbor, and as I say, one month in Pittsfield. So it varies.
Okay. So it would be May 1st until?
Until you...
As needed.
You find somebody. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Council, keep back.
I had just a couple of formality questions to begin with. First off, maybe, I don't know, maybe the current city manager could respond to this. I'm not sure who would be the right person to address the question to. But is there, what does it say in the city charter about, so I know for city manager, there are residency requirements, and I don't remember what the window of, of time window was for that. But does that in any way impede our ability, or put any parameters around an interim city manager?
Yeah, I think the short answer is no, for the interim as far as residency requirements. So then, for the manager, it doesn't specify a window. I know per contract, there was a window, you know, given when I came in. We can, we can double-check to be sure, but I don't believe there's any residency issue with an interim or acting city manager. If you remember, the last acting city manager also didn't live in Waterville.
Yeah.
Bill Potts, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. And then, just because, Cornell, you are, and perhaps there is not here, but I'm just asking the question, because you work, you are part of the team that is overseeing the recruitment and hiring of a new city manager, is there any sort of conflict of interest that would, that would be at least perceived?
I don't work for Eaton Peabody anymore.
Oh, you don't? Okay, I'm sorry.
No, when I, kind of a backstory to that, I was working with Eaton Peabody and Don doing consulting, but when I went back to Bar Harbor, Eaton Peabody had pending litigation against the town of Bar Harbor.
I got you.
So they asked that I resign. So I, I got Don and...
Okay.
Signed a non-disclosure agreement about cruise ships and, so, no, so I would be a part-time employee of the City of Waterville.
I see. I see. And, yeah, I got you.
But I do know Don and...
Yeah. I just remember you from the last, not too recent past.
Right. Wasn't that long ago?
All right. Any other questions at this point?
I guess, since we have Cornell here, it says around 30 hours. So how would you determine that? And would that be just based on what needed to be done, or would it be, you know, how many days a week would that be?
After a couple of weeks, I think I would know. It was 24 in Orno, plus or minus. When I went to Pittsfield, they asked, could we make it 30? So I said 30, and it says plus or minus, so it can be more or less. In Orno, it was roughly 24 until I had to do the budget. So I had, that took a lot of time. I don't know where you are on the budget process.
We should be just about wrapping up by the time you would possibly arrive, hopefully, guys, right?
Excellent. Wishful thinking, but, yeah. All right. Anything else? All right. Wonderful. Cornell, thank you. We appreciate it. All right. Can I get, please, a motion to approve by title only?
So moved.
Second.
And all those in favor? Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Moving into New Business, Resolution 60, 2025.
Refer to the Planning Board zoning ordinance amendment, airport industrial zone.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Jeff? I'm sorry. Yeah, I see you're here tonight.
I'm sorry. I wasn't aware if you were asking for discussion from...
No, no, that's fine. Yeah, please, no, if you want to. House of Green.
Yeah, I just was wondering, I saw the site plan with a lot of parking spots, and I just wondered, what trucks would these, what trucks would be parking there?
Next rezoning.
I apologize. I'm sorry. I thought this one was you.
No.
The airport.
I'm sorry. I'm about the Drummond Avenue.
10-4. All right.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
You could sit for this one, then. You are dismissed. Ann, how are you?
Property owner was planning to zoom in, and do you not see Maria Freeman? She's raising her hand.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Freeman. Can you hear us okay?
Hi there. Yep, I'm here.
Okay, we can hear you.
Wonderful. All right.
Great. Thanks so much. So I think the question was, what trucks would be parking there? Is that right?
Yeah.
Yep.
So this is an opportunity to provide truck parking for traffic that's passing through on 95. So, you know, it's just basically meet the need of the lack of truck parking, you know... So, you know, it's just basically meet the need of the lack of truck parking, you know, throughout the area in general.
Okay. Great.
Okay. All right. Any questions with regards to this? All right. All those in favor? All right. Thank you. All right, moving on to Resolution 61, 2025.
Refer to the planning board zoning map amendment, seven properties on the west side of Drummond Avenue.
Move to adopt.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Jeff, please.
Good evening. Sorry about the confusion. Jeff Allen, my name is Hudson.
No, no, my confusion, my fault.
This was initiated by one of my clients, Dennis Brockway, who has a purchase and sale agreement for Lot 9, map 68, Lot 9, which is a large one at the end of Wolf Street. He is, it's currently zoned industrial, and he would like to rezone a portion of that property to be residential, Res B, I guess is what the rest of the neighborhood is, and keep a portion of it industrial next to some existing self-storage units on the adjacent property. So I believe after Mrs. Beveridge heard this and kind of communicated, there was another gentleman that requested his property, which is also zoned industrial, be rezoned to residential B. And so the, then, I guess the question now is, is that possible? And I think I'm asking for a referral to the planning board to have them research this some more.
Great. Thank you. And anything you want to add to this, or you?
I'm sorry.
Anything that you want to add to this, or?
No, I just added property owners in between Jeff's client's property and the, the person to the north, right at the town line.
So.
I added people in between just because I, they have to be notified about the rezoning request anyway. So if they would like to have their properties rezoned to residential B, they'll, they will already be involved with the conversation.
And?
So there are only two people right now requesting rezoning.
Okay. So when we look at this, the highlight, the 9, 3, 4, what is that, 5, 6, 1, 6, like, those are the properties that we're talking about?
The ones that are highlighted in blue.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And the gentleman at the north end of Drummond Avenue was a city employee, and he just wants to add a shed to his property, but in the industrial zone, there's a 50-foot setback requirement. So this would allow, rezoning would allow him to put the shed where he wants it, so.
Got you. Okay. And the planning board will discuss which part of the properties are, are either zoned. And you've got that all mapped out, I'm sure, and so will the, okay, perfect. Awesome. Any other questions at this point? Seeing none. Can I get a roll call, please, Patty?
Does this require a roll call?
Well, I mean, well, show your hands. I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Show your hands, all those in favor. My apologies.
That's okay. Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, moving on to Resolution 62, 2025.
Move to adopt.
Approve, sorry, approved contract for fixed-price diesel fuel FY '26.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. Is Matt online or no?
Matt will not be able to join us tonight, but this is basically something we do every year. Our annual diesel contract, the price is a bit lower this year, so that's, that's good news. Other than that, just routine business.
Okay. Any councilor questions or comments with regard to our price this year? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor? Can I ask, show your hand, can we get them up a little bit more? Patty does have a hard time seeing some folks, so.
I'm kicking around the podium.
If we could get, if we could raise your hand if you're sure, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, moving on to Resolution 63, 2025.
Accept the annual reports for the affordable housing TIF districts.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on this? This is simply just accepting these reports, Brian, correct?
Yeah, this is just a status update required by the state of Maine on our affordable housing TIF projects. So Gilman, Mount Mary, and Lockwood are required to submit this annually. It's just a simple status update, and it has to be approved by the, the legislative body of the city also.
Wonderful. Okay. Any councils have any questions or concerns with this? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to Resolution 64, 2025.
Establish a small project reserve account for small construction projects to be administered by the city engineer.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. All right. Brian, why don't you just give us a, just a quick recap, and then we'll invite Andy. You can come on up while he's kicking, getting this thing started.
Yeah, we'll invite Andy, yeah, but basically, this is potentially a small reserve account to tackle some of our kind of routine projects that people like Andy work on frequently. A really good example is the culvert work that needs to be done on Web Road to address some drainage issues. We have a number of areas of the city, areas of the city where Andy is actively working on drainage issues or water runoff issues. We have a lot of these. So this would potentially be an account to be able to get contractors in as soon as possible to do projects like this, and I'll let Andy expand more on that and how, in a day-to-day world, this would be very practical for you to have.
Yeah, most of these projects, if, you know, they may be worth $1,000 to $5,000, they're not, you can't really put them out to bid because the bid's going to come in at $25,000, right? So, so it's something that we can line up some, there's plenty of projects to line up. Won't be any lack of work for them to do, but mostly drainage-related, but it could also be concrete or some other public, public type projects, but put it out to bid by, like, by the unit prices, might be hourly for excavators, bulldozers, rollers, manpower, dump trucks, sand, loam, gravel, riprap, things like that. And like, the DOT does this, and typically, you might award it to everybody, or you might, you know, might be three or four contractors that actually awarded it, and then we'll say, okay, this is contractor 1, 2, 3. Say there's some, maybe emergency or some work that really we want to get done pretty soon, we call contractor 1. If they're, they're too busy, they say, these are booked for three months, we'll call the next one in line, and that's, that's how it's usually done. I'll, I'll keep track of the hours and everything, and we'll write it specifically that, you know, it'd be pretty easy to track. No, no mobilization cost, money will be given, you know, you, you get there and you start, and when the equipment works, you get paid, and if you don't, you don't, you know. And then, and I, we have, we have work that some, sometimes it builds up for a couple of years, and it's nobody's fault. Public Works has, has a lot of projects out ahead of them for the whole season. They have a lot of vacation time in the summertime, so, and I, and I get just bombed out. You, you guys probably get called, you, you will, but you, you guys get called too, all the time. And then it goes to the city manager, then he comes down to me, and then I deal with it, and then I get called again, and they call again. And, and I, I don't mind that, but it, I'd like to be able to tell them something, you know, instead of, I don't know. Sometimes I say, oh, we'll get you later, and then it doesn't happen, and I get called again, and I feel bad about it, but not much I can, I, I don't pull the levers or drive the trucks, so nothing much I can do about it, so. But if this, this way, it will, it will cost more because Public Works, you know, we kind of consider them free because their, their salary, you know, they're, they're not salary, but they're 40 hours a week, right? So we usually don't count the labor on those projects. So this will cost more money, but it'll get done quicker, we can get the stuff done, and especially the drainage, the drainage issues that have been building up. And Web Road, I think, would be number one to fix those problems, and there's, there's plenty of other drainage, you know, from industrial, I mean, from the airport road down, you know, to a lot of residential stuff that has to be fixed, so.
Okay. And you're asking for this account to be initially funded in the amount of the $26,180 from an insurance payment from the damaged light pole that was hit on College Ave?
Correct.
Okay. And then in your memo, you also have potentials or, you know, an idea for how this may or may not be, you know, funded in the future? And certainly the council can take that up, you know, during their, you know, their budget cycle talks, but it looks like you're looking, you know, potentially to put this in the budget, as a line item in the budget going forward, you know, each year and whatnot, so.
Yeah, whatever, whatever the complete, I mean, $26,000 won't go all that far when, when we get going, so.
Sure.
It'll certainly, it'll certainly help and get started, maybe that's all you want to do for this year, but I could picture $50,000 to $100,000 pretty easily would be workable, and then we could, you know, knock out the projects that come in, and, and some, some of them might have to wait. There's other, there's other things around that should be fixed, you know, there's concrete, there's bad sidewalks that, you know, they're just too small to deal with, that, that, you know, you, like I said, you don't really want to put it out to bid because it'll cost you 10 times as much money as it, as it should cost, so.
Okay. All right, I will open this up to questions, any councilor questions at this point for, for Andy? Counsel Kliebke?
Well, I don't know if I have a question, but in, in general, this makes eminent sense to me. Yeah, I, I think, like, one of the number-one complaints I hear from constituents is about the crumbling infrastructure that we have in all manner of ways across the city. And we, we, you know, we've already heard about the limitations of, of Public Works. We have a narrow window to get this work done and making sure that we can get it done efficiently and, yeah, expeditiously. I, yes, please, that, that's kind of how I feel about, about this.
Counsel Green.
Yeah, I'm, I agree, and, you know, we've been involved on a project like this back and forth, and it, it is frustrating for homeowners. Is it fair to say that these, these jobs would be things that are not planned as opposed to things that are planned for Public Works? I'm just trying to understand how this meshes with the workflow and the budget for the, for the work that they're doing.
Well, some of them, I, I put on a list with Matt and I, and John get together, and we put together a list, and, and it just, sometimes it doesn't work out the, the way it should be. And some of them are unplanned. You know, 2024 wasn't too bad because we didn't get the rain we did in 2023. 2023, we could have used the $250,000 to fix some of the stuff. And last year wasn't so bad. Who knows what this year is going to bring, but there's still a lot of this backlog of culverts and drainage problems that are easily solved, it just takes a little bit of time and money. And most of these, most, like, like the residential culverts, we could probably do two or three in a day pretty easy. There's some other drainage work that probably won't take much more than a day or so, so you're not talking a lot of money. One day with a, a crew with, you know, a large excavator and a couple dump trucks and all this stuff, $4,000, $5,000 generally is, is what that time, material type of thing will be. So, so that's the type of project we're looking. Culverts, if we could do three in a day for that amount of money, that would, that would be pretty good, and just to get them out of the way, and then, you know, the phones will start ringing, and, and I'll watch over them. I've got, before I came here, I was in the construction business for 40 years, so I, I know how to, I know how to get them done generally, you know, in the real estate area. And, you know, sometimes you, sometimes it doesn't work out quite as good as you like when things get a, water runs downhill, and, and, you know, there's certain ways to do things, and we do the best we can, but it'd certainly be, it would be a big help, and we could at least tell people, well, this year, I, we will get it done, you know, sometime this summer or whatever, so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And this doesn't take, this doesn't take away from any work that the, that Public Works would do?
Certainly not.
I mean, I mean, well, you, you kind of opened it up, it started by saying, like, Public Works does a certain amount of these projects already, based on, you know, their time and so on and so forth. So in conjunction with this effort, we'll also have Public Works doing whatever annual allotment, based on time and things, they will be doing some of these same types of fixes that, you know, we're going to try to take on.
We were certainly doing first with Public Works. Matt's game's all aboard for this. He likes the idea too, because he gets the same amount of calls that I get and stuff, so. So he, and we sit out, and, and there's certain things that we can do, and, and some things that, you know, especially if they start falling behind a little bit, or, or what other things come up, or they, he might, you know, we might say, okay, let's take these three or four projects and lump them in and call somebody, and they'll, they'll come in and, you know, get somebody to come in and do them all at once, and it might, you know, it might take them a couple of days or three or four days of work, and we can get them done, but, and I certainly wouldn't, you know, sneak around Matt's back and do, start doing projects that, that they, those guys could do, because certainly it's a lot cheaper, you know, as far as the city budget goes, it's, it's cheaper, you know, it's got its cash flow and stuff to have Public Works do it. But, but that being said, we're still going to get the gravel, the riprap, the other things delivered from someplace, and a lot of these contractors have it, and, and, you know, that, that's not a problem. And a lot of these, a lot of the people, you know, we have operators for this and that. We don't have bulldozers, we don't have big rollers, we have small compaction equipment, but we don't have the big stuff anyway. And we have an excavator that's in the mid, you know, mid-range, but we don't have any long-reach stuff that we would consider big, but it's really not for a contractor that, you know, does it all the time. But, but we, so there's certain things we just, we can't do. Or we would hire, I would rent something, or time we go get it and do all this stuff and bring it back, and it's, you know, it would be, it would be easier to have somebody just come in and do it.
All right. Counsel of the Brede.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I, I mean, I really, I like this project, but my question is, is the $26,000, where's that, where's those funds sitting right now? Is that in Public Works or general funds?
That's reimbursement to the city. I don't know if we even have those funds yet.
Yeah, yeah, we, it's in general fund some way, I don't know.
So we have received them already?
Yes.
We have taken ownership of those?
So, so this was, this was the light on College Avenue coming from here, past the railroad overpass. Somebody, somebody, I don't know, fell asleep behind the wheel or whatever, hit, hit, hit the pole, knocked it over. I tracked down the, I tracked down Allstate or whatever it was, and I did my own estimate, and they beat me down a little bit and depreciated the pole or some stupid thing. But anyway, they, they came up with 26 something, we agreed to, and they sent a check right out. The lights, we don't think it's necessary, and if it is, wants to be replaced, we'll go get one of ours. We saved all the lights, like, from Main Street projects and stuff, so we have matching lights to go there that are over on the Web Road. We can, if somebody, if we decide we want to put one there, we'll put one there. For now, I think we're going to take a junction box and put it in the road so we still have power there, and if, if we decide, but it will, certainly won't cost $26,000. It might cost us, you know, $2,000 or $3,000 if we have to get a light pole base and, and for hiring outside electrician, but it's not going to cost that much. So if, if it's decided we want to put that back, we'll, we'll go back and put the light there. But there's lights across the road and, and up and down, there's other lights between there and the bridge also, and I've been through there in the night and stuff. I didn't really notice anything. It's been gone for so long now, I don't know if the city's still going on without it, so.
Fair enough.
So just a, just a follow-up to that. So, so that means that these funds are now part of Public Works, since they're on the general fund?
Oh, they're in the general fund. I mean, I, I wouldn't say part of Public Works, but I'm not sure where, where they're hidden.
Again, this is sort of seed money for this, but it, it will require funding in future budget years to keep this account replenished.
All right. Any other questions for Andy? Seeing none. All those in favor? Wonderful. Thank you. All right, moving on to Resolution 65, 2025.
Approve the appointment to the Kennebec Water District.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. All right, so we had a, we had someone vacate the Water District appointment, and we now, we have two folks who have expressed interest in replacing them. We have both of them here, Matt and John Doucet, Matt Ballmer and John Doucet. What I'm going to have you guys do is I'm going to have you come up, just kind of talk a little bit. You guys can figure out which, who wants to go first, and then what we'll do is the, the council will simply just take a vote, and we'll, we'll move forward. So, John, thank you.
Two time orders.
Say?
Three minutes, or?
Yeah, yeah, just a few minutes. Just kind of introduce yourself, talk about, you know. Yeah, I didn't really prepare too much because kind of try to wing it. I find I go easier that way. My name is John Doucet and I'll try to speak into the mic a little bit. I watch quite a bit at home, so I know the challenges of this mic. Yeah, my name is John Doucet, live in Ward Four in Waterville here. And I applied just because I thought this would be a good way to segue into some public service. I thought that this would be a good opportunity to get the feel for it with the short term. My job is very flexible and the meetings are at a very good time in the morning, so I can kind of vary my start day as needed, the start of my day as needed. So my schedule fits well there. So in terms of, I know that there's been discussion on this council and maybe planning board as well about planning board members being able to make it to the planning board. So that would be my case. I would be able to make it to these meetings pretty, pretty well. Occasional deadlines sometimes might get in the way, but again, very flexible. And my profession is electrical engineering. Granted, I'm young, but I know this will P C U. I'm a renewable studies engineer. So I'm in the renewable space and I really enjoy, I really enjoy engineering. I've done some different types of engineering as well. I've, I've been into P and C and substation. So in that regard, I definitely understand the just crumbling infrastructure all over across electric grid, water infrastructure, whatever it might be. So I've been through that kind of cost and, and modernization analysis. There's, there's some pretty big bids to replace a lot of relays and substations and you have to play with the engineering cost versus the actual like, you know, what are you getting for a product kind of thing? So there are some good ones, better ones. Yeah, so I think I have the ability to do that. It's kind of what I do on a daily basis. Now I'm doing renewable energy studies, so I look at things really in-depth, analyze systems, come up with solutions. Capacitor banks are a big thing to offset reactive power and provide enough reactive power as well. So, yeah, I, I think I'm decently qualified. I'm sure this gentleman back here looks, looks very well qualified there. Okay, there he is. So, yeah, whoever you choose, you know, so be it. But, yeah, I thank you for considering me and, yeah, thank you.
Is anyone from the council before you sit down? Anybody have any questions for John at this point? Awesome. Thank you, John. All right, Matthew?
Yes. Hello.
Good evening.
Matt Balmer. Lived in Waterville 13 years, grew up in Smithfield, not far away. I am, I was an engineer at one point. I'm really not anymore. I am in banking now, so I have worked for TD Bank for quite a while. Got some operational leadership. I can bring financial management expertise to the role. Probably not on the engineering side anymore. So, you know, wife, kids, wife works for Waterville Public Schools. Saw this as an opportunity for me to get engaged in community because I'm not really, except with softball right at the moment. So I coached quite a bit of softball for the Waterville High School team and at the junior levels.
Any questions for Matt? Yes?
I, I have a question I would have asked either of you. And maybe it's a little awkward, but what would you say your, when thinking about the Kennebec Water District, what would you say your, you feel like your biggest priority would be?
I can speak for myself. I don't exactly know. So I don't know what the problems are facing Kennebec Water District right now. I know some people that work there. I could bring operational knowledge, budget management, financial management, but I don't know. I'd need a problem thrown at me to be completely honest.
Well, it's actually my wife you're replacing, whoever it is would be replacing. So I'll ask a question. How do you feel about, what do you think about? How do I put this question? The, uh, the regulatory regime around PFAS and the potential for the Water District to have to implement a augmented filtration system and what that would mean in terms of rates for the repair? Like, what are your thoughts about that? What would your priorities be around that, that kind of question?
Well, banking is highly regulated, so, I mean, you have to be driven by the regulation in order to, to meet the minimum standard with health and safety and young kids that drink that water. I would probably lean towards, more towards safety than I would towards finances on that. But you're always constrained by finances, so you've got to manage it appropriately.
Sure, yeah, please. I didn't mean to spark a debate, but this is, this, I think it's actually an important question.
Yeah, probably some of the friendly debate you guys have had here. Yeah, so I guess to the first question, I would say something, as I said before, you know, grid monetization versus, you know, just costs. I think those two things are very important. Obviously, we don't want to be paying sky-high rates for our water, but we want reliable, safe, efficient systems in our city to support the infrastructure. Being the engineer that I am, I started looking at like water system infrastructure and the other types of design and all that. And there's reliability standards to meet, and that's the same in power and engineering as well. So, you know, you need to make sure that, you know, that everything is online for a certain amount of, amount of time and has a certain, about, certain reliability factor to it. And to your second question on PFAS, that's definitely important to me. Although we live in the city, I know that my grandmother who lives out in Elbion, lived out in Elbion, you know, and others in those more rural areas are definitely heavily impacted by PFAS. And I know particularly one up in Fairfield, there's a farm there that was pretty heavily impacted there and some residents around. So, yeah, I think that's another, another element to the job as well is implementing some above and beyond whatever PFAS standards there are in this relatively new world of PFAS, I guess we're all kind of exploring. You know, implementing those to whatever point, you know, we can't spend bajillion dollars on that stuff to, you know, implement it, but, you know, safety does come first at the end of the day.
I guess one of the things that was embedded in that question is, you know, there are state, there are state mandated levels and then there are federal levels, but the, what those federal levels are is very much in play, given the current administration and the way those, that regulatory regime is being reevaluated. And so I was just trying to, you know, understand what the priorities would be if, you know, of course, the entity has to obey the law, of course, but when that law may be at odds with, you know, more permissive than it is currently, I guess, my, my question, that, that was kind of part of where I was getting at.
I guess to that, I would just advocate for the more, more restrictive, less permissive, less, you know, not the one with like the less regulations definitely, to the higher standard, you know, backed by research, science and all that stuff. As long as that's there, I see no reason to, to do it. Again, we don't need to over-engineer, but, you know, that's for a lot of their engineers to do too, so.
All right.
Yeah, sure. I'm sorry, yeah.
Well, I didn't know if you wanted to answer, but I mean, if there's conflicting criteria, I, I think you have to meet the more restrictive standard. And in this case, I guess if the federal was to be less restrictive and the state was to be more restrictive, you still have to meet the state one, so have to meet all standards.
Sure.
All right, excellent. Any other councilor comments, questions? Okay, so I think what we'll do now is just simply open this up to a vote. How do you want it, like just? All in favor of?
So we have, does someone want to nominate one person and then we can take a vote on that person?
Yep, so I'll move to nominate Matthew. What's your?
Balmer.
Balmer. You're Balmer. Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, so shall I take a roll call? Would that be helpful or just a show of hands for Matthew?
Yeah, show of hands is, I think is fine, yeah. That works well. All right, all those in favor of Matthew? Where you would raise your hand?
So we have Gillie, and Harad, so three?
Are we, I just want to clarify, everyone knows what we're voting on. I'm just hearing some commentary about making sure we have. So again, Matt is on the left, correct?
Correct. John is on the right.
And John is on the right.
We are.
Unusual, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're.
Okay.
We're voting for Matt.
So we're voting on Matt Balmer. I had three hands, is that the correct vote? Okay, so I would assume then that we have three votes for?
So it's the mayors pick.
What's that? What's that?
So it appears there's a 3-3 tie. Is that right?
It's you, Mike.
Great, thank you. Listen, you know, I appreciate both of you for stepping up and, and, you know, we'd be willing to serve, you know, hearing everything that's, was presented. I would cast my vote for Matthew at this time, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you.
I hope you continue to try to be involved, though. I think either of you would be excellent in that role. Thank you both for stepping forward.
I agree. I agree.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Resolution 66, 2025.
Authorizing closure of Merchant's Way for outdoor dining.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Patty, this is just, as I, as I recall, this is just our annual, we put this forward just to, to get the ball rolling for this?
That is correct. And we don't have any applicants thus far for any of these that would be impacted. But in anticipation of them coming forward, as soon as the weather turns, it's kind of a quick turnaround to get people their permits. I will say that I did hear from the Lion's Den that they will not be using the park this year, so they're interested in outdoor dining. But that could mean that you-know-whos could take some space in the, if we close the street off. Obviously, if we don't get any applicants for that section, we don't have to close the street, so we wouldn't be putting up barriers if there wasn't going to be any use for that.
Just to clarify, you mean that Lion's Den doesn't want to use that, like the back parking lot out in the concourse area?
They're not going to do any outdoor dining this year.
Okay, okay.
Huh, okay. All right. Breaking news. Thank you. All right, all those in favor or any other discussion at this point? I'm sorry.
I think outside dining is awesome, so I'll go for it.
I have a question.
Yes.
Have there been overtures from you-know-whos or whoever?
There's been inquiries from you-know-whos. I haven't heard from others as yet, although I did speak with Fred from the Proper Pig. He is interested in the Common Street space again, but no one's formally come in to apply.
The comment that I would make regarding this is that other businesses that are along there, I have heard from business owners that in the past, and last year it actually improved, but in the past, there have been, you know, stacks of motorcycles and it has spilled onto the sidewalk and it's been a little bit hard to contain and has interfered with some of the, the conduct of, of the other non-dining oriented businesses there. And so we can approve this, but I just want it registered that there is, it's not universally loved by all of the people, all the, all the establishments along the concourse right there. And I think it is, it's highly dependent upon how it's managed and, yeah. It has sort of become in the past like a motorcycle parking area. I know we have a motorcyclist on the council here. Motorcycles are great, but, yeah, it's just making sure that it, there is equal access for all of the businesses through that, that corridor, you know? The areas that are not designated for dining, that they don't become, you know, the sidewalk doesn't become a parking lot for motorcycles.
I do remember last year when, when we spoke about this and Jason had talked about, based on the way of the, the placement of the Jersey barrier, I would say on the south side, conducive with the, with the crosswalk, he did find a lot of people were just pulling in because it almost looks like additional parking, so there was some, some concerns there. And I, I don't know if there was some sign, I know we were talking about some signage about, not, no, this is not a parking area, because again, it is, it's where the sidewalk is, so folks coming from the sidewalk, from the parking in the concourse to those, that other side of Merchant's or concourse way, I would say, then I think that's probably, you know, maybe where the spot you were, you were talking about, but, but certainly, yeah, I mean, obviously.
Yeah, in front of Spell, in front of Spellbound and the Record Connection and like that whole area.
Well, I mean, the thing is, if someone is illegally parking or parking like a crumb bomb, I mean, that would be something for parking enforcement or law enforcement to, to take care of. So they would be able to enforce that.
Councilor Green?
So my concern has more to do with, if we don't know that there's anyone who wants dining there, I, I would like to, before we close off the street, I would like to know what the proposal is. And we've always had actual restaurants who said, I'd like to do this. And, and I just assumed in this case that it was for the Lion's Den and you-know-whos. So especially because that is a city park, I think it's worth, you know, considering before we just say yes, we'll close it off, what the proposals are.
Well, this, I, I agree with you. This is step one to allow for the closure of the streets, should anyone want to use that area of the street, which is what you-know-whos used, right? And the park was used by Lion's Den, but that doesn't seem to be warranted this year. So the street closure is step one. Step two is each establishment comes in and applies for an outdoor dining permit.
Okay.
So if it's different than what they've had last year, I would probably, I would bring it to the council because I don't want to approve anything that wasn't approved in the past. So if they come in with the exact same layout, then that's an easy approval because they've done it in the past, they work with code to make sure for whatever structures they put up. But if it's a different arrangement, I would bring it to the council just so that you can weigh in on it.
Okay, but if, yeah, okay. But we wouldn't necessarily have to close the entire portion of that street, though.
Right, well, when you look at Merchant's Way, there's only so many ways you can close that street. And we had looked at it with liquor enforcement back when this was initially proposed, and they thought it was reasonable to put the barriers where we did because there was still a turnaround on one side towards the, where the Colby Building is. And then on the other side, there's still through traffic. So that was a logical place for those barriers to be placed. It would be problematic if you either lessened that space and made for what would now be a dead end, you know, in the middle of that. So I think it's either, it's all of it, where we have designated the closure and whoever utilizes the space, you know, then they, we approve their plan, or it's not closed at all. Because I don't think there's a, in my mind, there's no middle ground there.
Okay.
Councilor Harad?
So I guess, so what I'm hearing is, so does it sound like you're, we're just authorizing to close it and then if nobody applies, we won't actually close anything?
That's correct.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
I have another kind of related question, which is that part, what's the name of that park? That little post stand?
Haynes Park.
Haynes Park, yeah. Prior to outdoor dining at Haynes Park, it was a, it resembled more of a park. It had some shrubbery and had some trees. And currently, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's pretty much just a patch of wood chips now. There, there's just a patch of wood chips. Now that Lion's Den or any of those businesses that had the benefit of use of that public park are done with it, is there any hope that those establishments might try to restore some of the landscaping that their use kind of wiped away?
I think unless that was part of their agreement with the city, you know, we'd have to go back and take a look at that, but my guess is that was not included. We could obviously approach them and have discussions, but I don't know if we have anything obvious to compel that to happen.
Yeah, okay. Wow, that's a question.
I think it was just the structures. My understanding was they were going to be removing whatever remaining structures they had.
Yeah, I think it was like wood chips and white claw kids.
And I think once, once they're, they've completed that, I'm sure that, you know, we can work with the Parks and Rec and figure out how to proceed from there. with the Parks and Rec and figure out how to proceed from there.
I mean, listen, I mean, this, it's really up to, I think it's six of one half dozen of another have proven this evening. I mean, again, any request to utilize the park is going to come before you at that point, and at which point we could also enact this particular thing, so I don't know that it's, I mean, entirely necessary how you want to proceed with this tonight, but again, this is something automatic that we do, you know, we do tackle each year, and though the Lion's Den is out, doesn't necessarily mean another business might want to, didn't get the word yet and may want to take advantage of it, and if they do, then, you know, we're ready, but it's up to you guys, what you want to do.
Well, it was You Know Whos pub that used the street space.
The street piece, yeah.
Right.
So, oh, so you're right. So what you're saying is Kevin could come in and say, "We're gonna go ahead and do the same thing we did last year." He wouldn't have to come back to us, because we already have his demographic.
Correct.
And so, yeah, so at this point, you're right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they used the street space, and then Lion's Den was on the left side crossing over, getting into the park.
So if he chooses to do that, we're all set to just simply close it. He can do what he wants to do.
Correct.
And there's no additional delay from the council. Counsel Green.
Has anyone asked him what his plans are?
No. This, again, this is relatively routine. We allow for closure of the streets, and then we don't close the streets if they don't come in and request the permits. They have always in the past. I just heard from Lion's Den, I don't know if it was today or yesterday, that they weren't interested. It might have been today. It's been a really long day. I'm sorry. But they told me today that they were not interested in the park, so.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, and I suppose they could also change their minds, but is there any other business that could use that park? I mean, it would mean walking, it would be difficult, I would imagine, because you'd have to be.
Well, there's only so many restaurant-type businesses that are within walking distance to the park. Obviously, Holy Cannoli is right there. They've opted out the last year or two. Whether they're, anything else is further down. I think the Greek restaurants are further, the Greek restaurant is further down. So I'm not sure that there are others close enough to make it reasonable to have their staff walking there.
Right. So practically speaking, we would be doing this so that if You Know Whos wanted to do outdoor dining, they could get going on April 1st?
Right, as they have in the past.
All right.
All right. Any other comments? All right. All those in favor? All right, thank you. All right, moving on to H. Resolution 67, 2025.
Authorizing closure of a section of Silver Street for outdoor dining.
Move to adopt.
Second.
And again, same thing at this point. Have we heard from Charlie with regards to his plans for the summer?
No one has reached out. My understanding, though, is there's a restaurant that may be going in where the old Paragon shop used to be. They might have interest in using part of the street, but we talked about that last year, that we would make, you know, an arrangement between the two restaurants to utilize the space together, you know, to equally use it or whatever portions that they desire. But again, I have no applications in hand as of now. But I think the bigger, the issue at hand is closure of that street to traffic, so that outdoor dining can commence.
All right. Any counsel comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Again, moving on to Resolution 68, 2025.
Authorizing closure of a section of Common Street for outdoor dining.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Any counselor comments with regard to this? I think, I don't know that we need Patty's explanation. You have spoken, though, to Proper Peg, and he, they are interested.
Right.
In the same footprint that they had last year.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So this one, this one doesn't actually close the street. This one just simply allows for the use of the parking spaces and the bump out.
Yes, they take a, I can't recall the number, three or four parking spaces, and we made a separate handicap accessible parking next to the one that's kind of blocked off somewhat to keep the handicap accessible parking there.
Okay. Great. Any counselor comment with regard to this? Seeing none. All those in favor? Okay, Order 69, 2025.
Accept property donation, map 32, lot 8, Paul Avenue.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Brian, in Matt's absence, do you want to just kick us off?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have, the next three items deal with this same matter. So we have three lots on the paper street section of Paul Avenue. Two, the owners are interested in donating those properties to the city, and the third one, we will be purchasing. These three lots have some strategic value for the city. One, for example, number six on this map, we actually have a road that cuts across it currently. The other two, abut, obviously, the Pine Ridge Recreation Area, and there are some ideas for either picnic and viewing area, and obviously, the trails are there also, so they have some value to the city. Again, two of the owners, we'll get to those other items, but this first one is Pam and Ron Merrill want to donate this parcel. It has an assessed value of $5,800. It's .287 acres, and they would like to donate it to the city.
Any counselor comments? Questions?
Thank you.
All right. Seeing none. All, yes.
So the, is, help me be clear, maybe for the public, would the potential utility to the city be another access point down Paul Avenue to the dog park and?
I don't think an access point is the goal. You know, one, it just has strategic value right next to this property, but I think their initial ideas were just some viewing area or some picnic area, but there could be potential other uses also that we could discuss.
But it is adjacent to our current hold.
Correct. And again, the maps are included in your packets.
All right. This is an order that does require two votes. First vote, all those in favor? All right, thank you. Moving on to Order 70, 2025.
Accept property donation, map 32, lot 11, and map 51, lot 149, Paul Avenue and Riverview Street.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, same deal. So Mr. Chris Hill wants to donate the section. It's assessed $8,400, total acreage of 1.12. And again, this is abutting the Pine Ridge Recreation Area, but there's another lot on this one. It's a small lot on Riverview. You can see it on your map. It's number 149, sort of right along the Maslonski Stream, is right here, and that is assessed at only $2,200, total acreage of .4. So there are no immediate plans with that parcel. You can see the location it is. It does, I think, potentially have some river access, but not that we would use it for that. But again, this is a very small lot, $2,200 for assessed value. We're talking about $40 a year in taxable value, so pretty small.
To that point, what was the total taxable value of all three of these orders?
You'd have to, you'd have to just calculate that real quick. So it's $8,000 on the other parcel here, so we're about $20 per thousand of assessed value. And then the other one was $5,800.
Yeah.
But again, these, I think, have more, again, strategic value for the city, just based on their location, than what we would, you know, get in tax value here.
Okay. Any questions, concerns? Okay. Again, this is an order that will take two votes. First night, all those in favor? All right, thank you very much. Moving on to Order 71, 2025.
Purchase property, map 32, lot 6, Paul Avenue.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, Brian, this is the last one.
Okay, so this last one, the owner is not interested in donating it to the city. They do want to sell it to the city. It has an assessed value of $6,200. The acreage is .43. They have agreed to a purchase price of $4,000, so it is, you know, a bit under the assessed value. We would also incur closing costs of about $1,500, so the total to purchase this parcel would be about $5,500. Funding would come from the 22 rec bond funds. And again, this one, I think this is actually the lot, if you look at the map, you see our road actually crosses over into it, so it does have obviously some value for the city.
Any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none. All those in, again, this is an order, so it will take two votes, so all those in favor? All right, thank you very much. And now we move on to Resolution 74, 2025.
Approve contract for fixed-price gasoline FY26.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, we're requesting this item be tabled until our first meeting in April. It's not quite ready to go, there was a delay.
A motion to table.
I'll second.
Motion to table to our next meeting on April 1st.
Correct.
Got amendment? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to next meeting.
All those in favor of the amendment? And can we move it as amended?
So moved.
I don't need, no, it's just tabling.
Table, okay, perfect. Thank you.
So it's all set. Yep.
All right, moving on to Resolution 75, 2025.
Approve bid award to Elite Road Markings LLC for street painting.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Brian, in Matt's absence, this is?
Yeah, I think Matt owes me a beer or something. That's okay. This is just for our road painting and restriping. That's an annual thing. We had three bids here, you see, and we like to award the bid to Elite Road Markings of Belgrade for $45,236.25.
Any counselor comments or questions?
Where would the money be coming from?
This is within budget.
Okay.
And when does a project start?
That's a good question. Usually, it's over the summer, I believe, once everything is swept through the spring. So my guess would be early summer timeframe, but we can get some exact dates if you're curious.
Also, can I do a follow-up?
Yeah, of course.
And Brian, where's this man? Also, with the timing, can we get a list of like the sidewalks, like the crossing walks that are getting painted?
Sure. Yeah, we can, there's, there's obviously a master list. This would be everything, so, but as far as timing, if you're wanting more information, yeah, I'll talk to Matt, and we can get those questions answered.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen these guys out at night. Usually, it's at night, and they just, they just section off the city. So, yeah, getting that timeline as to when they're going to be where, I think would be helpful for traffic movement and just general knowledge, so that's a great question. Okay. Any other comments or concerns at this point? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Resolution 76, 2025.
Approve contract extension with Pine Tree Waste Incorporated for municipal solid waste and recyclable material collection services.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, so this is an extension of our current contract, the Pine Tree Waste, for municipal solid waste collection, as well as recyclables. Our current contract expires at the end of March of '25, so we're asking for an extension of two years and three months. The three months would put us on our fiscal year cycle, so that would be through the end of June 30, '27. So two years, three months extension. The rates are outlined in the memo in your packet. There is a stepping up of the rates over the term of the contract, which is pretty typical, but I think we're happy with the service, and I think the other potential options are few. And so the staff recommendation is to extend for two years, three months, get us on that fiscal year cycle through '27.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none. All those in favor? Wonderful. Moving on to Resolution 77, 2025.
Approve use of funds from Fire Department Cost Recovery Account to update the city's AES master box system.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Chief. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, counsel. Thank you very much. I brought, I brought the actual expert of the fire alarm system here with me. I'll give you an overview of what we're looking to do, and if you have any technical questions, B.C. Gromek will be able to answer those. He's the one that runs this whole system and knows way more about it than I do. So I think you folks have all seen the nice red master boxes that sit on the outside of buildings. They get pulled, rings directly to the station with the housebells. That legacy system is gone and upgraded. We upgraded that system in 2019. What we replaced it with was a wireless AES system, a lot less maintenance involved with it. The red wiring that you see all across the city, that would fall down, and they'd have to fix it. So that's all gone away. What our system does is we are not the fire alarm system for a building, but we monitor the fire alarm system. What that does is it now reads the fire alarm system. The fire alarm system goes off. It rings directly into the fire station and also at the comm center, much quicker than, I'm not going to throw anybody a bus, but it's a very quick system. What we're looking at is 18 to 30-second timeframe that we're getting, we're getting notified that there is alarm going off in a building. This is way above the NFPA 72 National Fire Alarm Signaling Code, which says that it can be no more than 90 seconds, so we're well within that timeframe. What we're looking to do is upgrade the system. You can see the prices that I put in there. We're looking for no more or up to $21,000 from our Fire Department Cost Recovery Account to replace the software. You can see that it's three pieces of hardware that'll be phased out in the next few years in the total there. And then we're also going to purchase two new servers for the AES and MKS software systems, so that their own physical servers, they'll be running on their own servers. This will close a few loops that IT is a little worried about with some vulnerabilities in our system, so that'll be great there. Right now, in cost recovery, with the $10,000 that you folks allowed us to spend out of there to paint our fire truck, we still have $135,838 in that account. So this will bring the account down to $114,838 if we spend all $21,000 of it.
Any counselor questions at this point for the chief?
Oh, come on now. Don't you want to know from John what this thing's all about? This, this is a pretty awesome system. I'm going to be honest with you. When I came here, it was a huge learning curve. Again, I know very little about it. B.C. Gromek is really the technical whiz when it comes to this system. We do, we do charge for the system, and that is basically just for us to work on our boxes throughout the year and also to replace batteries. We have a $5,000 budget line item. This does not, this is way above and beyond that, but we do have to upgrade the system, because some of these things are sunsetting, and if we don't take care of it now, we're going to be behind the eight ball. So we're just looking to come up to where we need to be to make sure that the system is operational and that we don't have any problems with it.
I'll ask a question.
Oh, nice.
So what's the life expectancy of this system or maintenance going forward on it?
So they upgrade. So this system, I think, has been around 25 years, and they do annual upgrades to the actual radio receivers. And this newer software that we're getting, we annual upgrades, we have a maintenance contract with them. It's, it's the system that almost every alarm company is going to. They lost copper lines. They can't use copper lines for alarms anymore. Cellular, every like three to five years, they change, you know, from the level of the system, and all their equipment drops out, and then they've got to go back through and replace it all. So they're all, the majority of them are working to get, to use this same AES system that we use.
So follow-up question to that. So is this now, by moving this over, are we anticipating seeing an annual request for updating, or how often does the software, or how long, often will we have to update what we're doing here?
I think at this point, my guess would be that this is probably going to run 10 years.
Yeah, okay.
And then there'll be another big upgrade.
Yeah.
There's, there's that annual fee we charge that we'll have, we replace batteries in all the radios. We're at 104. We're at 104 accounts now.
Right, okay.
Thirty-ish of them are city buildings that, there's no cost involved, that when we originally bonded it, we did all of those, including we added this building, security and fire, we do security and fire next door. Airport, he added a fire alarm, we already had the radio up there ready for him. So it's really minimal, the batteries every three years, and then our labor costs have got to come in off duty for some catastrophe.
Yeah, okay.
And so the takeaway is that this AES system of communication is just more resilient to?
Yes, because it's on.
In general, I mean?
Yeah, it's a UHF, he puts cellular in here, but it's actually a UHF radio system, and it's a repeater system, so they all talk to each other. So it's always looking for a path to get back to the police department or the fire department where the two main receiving hubs are.
Mm-hmm.
So it's redundant, and we're actually, I think I, we have two buildings that might have two hops. The rest of them are actually hitting base radios.
So is it a dedicated UHF band that's separate from?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like, we're, we're in the 453 range, and there's like maybe a few businesses that, you know, tolling companies might be in that radio range, but for the majority?
It's clear.
It's very clear, and the UHF is really super clear compared to the VHF.
Yeah.
There are a lot of good things about the 453 range, so that's good, yeah. Okay.
And it's, and also along with that, our, our folks, we have, we have some dedicated folks that they're, they're learning about this system right now, but we go in and test our system once or twice a year, make sure it's working, make sure everything's good to go, make sure that our businesses and our folks are covered. It's, it's a great system. It really is a great system.
Good. All right. Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. All right, Resolution 78, 2025.
Approve use of funds from the Police Drug Forfeiture Reserve Account for replacement of the HVAC control system at the Waterville Police Department.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Major, good evening.
Hey, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Sir, in the effort to save time, also the next one talks about that, so I'll just address both of them at the same time. So the first is to talk about how we're going to fund this project, which is to take, we're asking for permission to take money out of the Drug Forfeiture Fund to fund this. The project is essentially the computer that controls the HVAC system, heating system at the police department has failed and occasionally just stops working altogether. We've come in over the, on a Monday morning and found no heat to be in the police department. Heat's down to 50, 50 degrees. The computer's thrown like 200 and something error codes over the week, weekend, and just stopped working. So we've been able to kind of limp through for the time being, and by resetting the computer repeatedly to get the heat back up and running in the building, but the ultimate fix is to replace it. So, so the first resolution is, is asking for $30,000 out of that Drug Forfeiture Fund to fund the project, and then the next resolution is the bid process, so.
Okay. All right, any questions with regard to the use of the funds for this project?
What, what do you use the funds for if, if you're HVAC and everything was working wonderfully?
So, so that, that fund is used to purchase police equipment and also to further drug investigations. The count, account currently has $90,000 in it, so using 30,000 of it would still leave us with 60,000 to do those things.
When did you first discover that the HVAC system was failing? Like when was the first, when was the first sign of problems?
So we've had problems for quite a while. Trying to get it diagnosed has been kind of the problem. You know, one end of the building would be like 80 degrees, and then the other one side of the building would be like 60. So we had been trying to get that figured out for a while, and I think part of the problem is that we have, you know, and this is my layman's understanding of it, is that there's nine heating zones in the police department and three air conditioning zones. So one, the air conditioning zone or sensor might be in one room, and the heating sensor might, or thermostat might be in the other room. So theoretically, one room could have the heat and the air conditioning on at the same time. So part of this computer, the new computer that we're looking to get here, to the control that will communicate with each other better to, to stop us from having those types of problems as well.
Any other questions or comments at this point? All right, yes.
I guess, you know, obviously this, there's some urgency here.
Yep.
But both of these items do seem like, I don't know, would they be capital projects or budget items that we will be soon addressing the budget, right? So I'm just, I'd just like to understand, is this something that would have been asked in the budget, but it's coming now because of urgency, or?
Yes, I think we originally, the chief had put the money in the budget for next fiscal year, but we cut it out and are asking to do it now.
Okay.
Because obviously, even though we're rolling into spring, the heating system still gets some use in March.
Right, okay. You know, as everyone knows, we're, we're coming into budget season, and it's going to be tough, so I guess I'm just assuming that there's also some tough conversations about what goes on the list for next year.
Yep.
But anyway, certainly, you need heat and air conditioning.
And Maine, we sure do.
We need to do it, yeah. Okay.
So to be clear, they pulled it off of the capital plan, not in the budget, and using their, so it wouldn't be in the budget. They're using their funds, they were asking to use the, the funds.
I'm sorry, I guess I didn't.
Right, so this was in the capital plan?
So, yes, originally, we did put it in the budget for next year, but we cut it out of the budget for next year to use the drug forfeiture funds to do it immediately.
Okay, that wasn't clear, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
Great, okay, perfect.
Correct, yes. Yeah, that's why I wanted to kind of make sure that was clear.
Good.
Okay, so this resolution, 78, 2025, is for the approved use of the forfeiture funds. All those in favor? Okay, wonderful. Now we'll move on to Resolution 79, 2025.
Approve bid award to Whoole's Plumbing, Heating and Air Conditioning for replacement of the HVAC control system at the Waterville Police Department.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, so this particular item, again, it just addresses the, the who is going to be doing the work and the process in which you've done that.
Right, so, so we did conduct the RFP process. We got two bids. The first was from WH Demmons, and the other is from Whoole's Plumbing and Heating. We're currently recommending to go with Whoole's. They were almost half the cost, $30,000 as opposed to almost $60,000 from WH Demmons. Additionally, Whoole's came to the building, inspected and diagnosed the whole system. They're intimately familiar with it because they've been doing, you know, the current maintenance and cleaning of the furnace and et cetera. And again, they were the only ones to actually physically set foot inside the premise and inspect the, the current infrastructure of the building, so.
All right, great. Any questions with regards to that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Wonderful, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to Resolution 80, 2025.
Authorize the renewal of a special amusement permit to the VFW Post 1285.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion with regard to this? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 81, 2025.
Authorize the renewal of a special amusement permit to the Elks Lodge of Waterville Main Incorporated, doing business as the Elks Lodge.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, again, any discussion with regard to this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, thank you. Moving on to Resolution 82, 2025.
Authorize the renewal of a special amusement permit to SNL Productions Incorporated, doing business as Mainly Brew's Restaurant and Brew House.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion with regard to this one? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay. All right, moving on to Resolution 83, 2025.
Appointing additional members to the Impact Task Force.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, thank you. So again, this came to us a couple of weeks ago, probably, I don't know, three meetings ago, and we added some initial members. We did have some holes or additional spots to fill with this task force. This particular resolution fills those holes and makes this, this task force whole. So, let's see if we add, so we added Suzanne Walsh in the Social Services, we added Business Leader Brent Brockway, and impact or lived experience Nicole Condon. So we had, those were the applicants that, that we had had, and Flavio and I had the opportunity with Brian to review them all, and have made this recommendation to you all. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, Brian?
And, Mr. Mayor, yeah, just for all those who have been selected, you know, thank you for stepping up, first of all, but we will be reaching out to schedule an organizational meeting sometime soon, hopefully in the next couple of weeks to kick this off, so you will be hearing from us shortly.
Wonderful, all right, well with that, bring this to the agenda. I'll make a motion to, entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you very much, everybody have a great night.